We're starting to register, we don't have any kind of number so far as to how many because it is all online. But I presume by this Friday we'll take a look and see what each school has received so far and move ahead with that. And the rest of this information I will present to you later on, okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure. We're gonna go over some school board ethics and from school boards our representative here, this Robin Meehan, who I've worked with in the past with strategic plan and I'm sure that he did too. So, Robin, come on up.
Hello. Hi, good evening. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you, you probably don't get credit for towards, you are a board recognition, but I will say that you probably won't get credit for this to going forward because you do need seven out of nine members here. And unfortunately, there are not. Also, the members that are not here will need to have ethics, okay? So they will not be marked off as having their ethics training done for the year, okay? Having said that, let me just ask you, I did bring some packets, I'm trying to go green. So if you don't want a packet, just say so, it has the same as last year, but being that you might not have one.
You mean you can email it to us?
I don't, I can't. Some of it is not, I, but my presentation can be. Yes, please, thank you.
I'm not sure if I did this last year because I stored it. No, I don't have it, so I can't. I'll put right there.
No, that's fine.
You can have it back.
I've brought enough, I've brought enough for everybody, but I just want, you know.
I would have bought wine and have it, but I just wanna see what you're talking about.
So, absolutely. The, but I did put the presentation on a flash drive, so. So inside your packet, on the left-hand side, there is actually a form there that will tell you if you needed to get in touch with the Ethics Commission, how to do so, ethics and legal issues. There's also things you can listen to. On the left-hand side, there's a yellow paper, it says Blog Talk Radio. That's with Ray Penny, who I work with. Those are great to listen to, a legal perspective, you can listen to that. And also, um, the Ethics Commission one and social media, they're all really good. On the left-hand side is mostly just reading material on ethics opinions that have come out. I will tell you an interesting fact that happened at the delegate assembly this last time. In November was that a board brought forward a resolution that they wanted to have the Ethics Commission change their rulings. If they, right now, they can do a ruling that's a private ruling, so if someone, if I bring ethics charges against Debbie, throwing you into the bus, if I were to bring ethics charges against you, it could be given as a private ruling. Means that only she and I and the board would really know, no one else in the state of New Jersey would know about this. And what the board was concerned about is there may be some interesting information that somewhat might help someone avoid ethics rulings at that point, or ethics violations. So they are bringing it forward and school board's gonna stand behind that because they all voted at the delegate assembly to go forward with that. And to see if they can get the Ethics Commission to make everything an open opinion. They'll redact names, they redact the information that has to do with the district, but the information comes forward, so.
Privacy is protected.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, 'cause that was my concern.
Absolutely, but at least the information can come forward, which really kinda makes sense, right? So, okay. Okay, so, some things you might not know, the Ethics Act was established, I don't know. It was passed in nineteen ninety-two. It's essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people. These board members and administrators must avoid contact, which is in violation of their public trust and which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. It's the, sometimes the illusion of collusion. So the act established the Ethics Commission, code of ethics came along nine years later, conflicts of interest, disclosure statements, training requirements for board members. So mandatory training. The state Ethics Commission is made up of nine members appointed by the governor with three-year terms. And as you can see, two are school board members, two are school administrators, and five are non-school officials, also no more than five from the same political party. I just learned that one, I thought that was kinda interesting.
This is from the entire state of New Jersey?
Yes, mhm, so they're appointed by the, our governor. Yes?
What I've found interesting just recently is that one of the members was removed from the commission because he took money from the charter school.
I read that.
So I find it funny, I find it funny that guy who was gonna.
He was appointed to the Ethics Commission and was removed for being unethical, I saw that myself.
I, I, that one blew my mind.
Well, you just never know, do you? Right, exactly. So the, um, the Ethics Commission, the difference between complaints and advisory opinions, obviously you wanna stick to the right. If you think something is coming up, you would ask for an advisory opinion. Otherwise, if you make a mistake and you do something that you shouldn't, someone can bring you up on ethics complaints. So what if I, who does not live here in West Milford, can I, um, can I bring an ethics complaint against somebody?
No.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, don't have to live here to bring an ethics complaint against the board.
Do you have to stand there and say?
I can be a community member, come in, and because you're an elected official, I can bring an ethics complaint.
Yes, you can't be frivolous, can it?
It could be anything, and the Ethics Commission has to hear it and then they decide.
The board, or the board members are under the law. It's not me.
Well, you do need to.
You don't wanna go there, but you know, to answer, I think, I didn't.
Right, but you do need to check with your attorney on your insurance policy, like where you live, okay? So yes and no. So conflicts of interest, do you have anyone on the board that actually has, that's conflicted, that has an immediate family member? I know you did, but do you now? So no immediate family member working in the district? That's good, okay, that makes things much easier, it really does. Because then the, the confliction, you know, they couldn't be a part of hiring a superintendent, couldn't be a part of evaluating a superintendent if you're conflicted. So it does make it difficult. So if you have an immediate member of your family, that'd be spouse, dependent child residing in the state, yes.
Retired teacher is getting a pension from the district, so.
As long as that, as long, would that be you?
No.
Oh, okay. So say, say Inga is retired and collecting a pension from the, um, NJEA. That is absolutely fine as long as she's not active within NJEA. If she's active and is a, I don't know, what you can still be, but if you're active, whatever that word means, um, and I would have my attorney check that to see what exactly that means.
But there's no reason retired teacher couldn't vote a report petition and not even be.
Right.
You're talking about in this school district though?
If they are, if they have been, they could be, yeah, because you can be anybody, being retired, it can be fun.
What if you are a teacher not in this school district?
You can be on the board.
But I mean, if there's no conflict there, right?
Yes, there is a conflict. If you, um, Marilyn was just asking if you're a teacher in another district but you sit on this board, then yes, there is a conflict when it comes down to negotiation as of, of the contract.
If you have somebody living in the house with you, you're a board member and your daughter's a teacher in another district?
If they're, if they're, um, if you're paying for them, I believe somehow it rules, you know, and they live in your house, it is a conflict because you could benefit more than maybe if I was on the board and had nobody, than they could benefit. You could benefit more than I would, so it will be a conflict. The piece of it is, is that, for example, if you worked in another district, but part of that JEA, you sit on this board, you can actually vote on the, on the last part of the, um, the contract. Once the memorandum of agreement has been signed, you can then vote on the contract. I chuckle at that piece because honestly, once it's done, what can you do? You can, you can vote no, but it's probably no good. But possibly to you, it's your set, right? So that is what the only piece that you can have if you do, if you are still a superintendent. So it's not as much as.
The, the union part is only with the unions that deal with the, uh, educational. Like I work for the county, I'm in, I'm in union with the county, so that has nothing to do.
NJEA or the other, um. What's the other name?
The state of Westers?
No, one other, there you go. And there's only like two or three school districts in the whole of New Jersey that's still using.
Oh, we're, that's not us.
Teachers, no, nope.
And it ain't for us to.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so even if you, and you had a relative, that's still a conflict, but a little less than a step back if you vote, but thank goodness, I don't think you guys are in this position anymore. So if you did have a conflict, you would receive, you would recuse yourself if there's a benefit to you as a school official or member of your, anything would do to any of these pieces, so, you know, for example, like teachers who sit on boards, um, obviously when you're talking about things like strip sports, like, uh, they vote on those because their child, even if they're in the district, they're not gonna get anything more than anyone else in that class, so it gets the same trip. So things like that are absolutely fine, but if it does create a benefit of something, of some, any of these, then you would recuse yourself. You would not be able to, we talked about this briefly, evaluate and hire the superintendent. And you can't take part in any part of that search selection from the board for a new superintendent. That did come up at the delegate assembly also, there was a rule that does not create this. Well, it's not just one, apparently we're in a, um.
Now, when, when you say relative in the district, it could be anything, custodial staff, nurses, substitute teachers, uh.
For which part of it, like, for, give me an example, like, um.
Well, if you're, I'm a board member, so, I don't know, like, my son is in the school district and, I don't know, he's doing something there, but it may be, uh.
If he's not part of NJEA, it's not prob.
As long, I think, that's.
Yep, not a problem, as long as he's not part of the union, yeah. And there's also, there's always exceptions, so, there's always that gray area, part-time employees. There's an exception with part-time employees, so.
So they could be, they could be in the union, part-time employee, that's covered.
Well, usually part-timers are not in the union, but some of them still are. So there's, there's that discrepancy, so I would say if you have a situation like that, check with your attorney.
Relative.
Yes.
Cousins.
Right here. It depends on what you're talking about when you say the description of relative, though. Um, okay? With a conflict of interest over the evaluation or hiring of a superintendent, a relative means spouse, child, parent, or sibling.
And this would be.
Not an imme, that, this is more immediate right here, when you're talking about hiring the superintendent and evaluating the superintendent and really negotiations, you know?
I was more asking, said, well, it's one statement that I can't recommend a, may not recommend to the board, not, sorry.
So, no, that's okay, yeah.
May not recommend to the board a relative of the board or chief school administrator.
Mhm.
So, relative.
Well, that goes for anything, really. You can't recommend his son to work in the district, obviously, he can't recommend.
Yeah, but all, all our recommendations come from the superintendent, it's the superintendent that might recommend.
Right. He can't recommend, no.
Now, relative under the definition that we had a couple pages ago, okay?
Yep, and, and your superintendent cannot recommend any of your relatives or his, okay?
Using that definition we had on a previous page, 'cause I, you know, I consider relative a cousin, you know, a.
It depends on what you're talking about, because relative in another manner means something else and it's huge, but that's a legal matter, so I'm not going into that part of it, yeah. Okay. Um, when you're talk, here, when you're talking about nepotism, this is actually what you're talking about, I can't read.
Yeah.
Okay, so now the definition of relative becomes more expansive. Okay. You s, do you notice anybody that's not a.
Grandpa.
If my grandma could flip it to a.
My grandparent, I think that would fall under, like.
Yeah, like, how about, um, sister-in-law? Sister-in-laws.
Well, son or daughter-in-law.
Sister-in-law. Sister-in-laws are not created equal. They're not, because there is one sister-in-law that you could hire and there's one that you can't. So if my, now I have a brother who has a wife, right? And I have a brother-in-law who has a wife.
Um, so the brother-in-law has a wife you can hire, but not the other.
Um, far enough to.
There's no blood.
Right, right.
Actually, no, you're, actually, what did you say? You said my brother-in-law's wife?
Yes.
My brother's wife, my brother's wife, there's no blood at all there. The brother-in-law is part of, yeah, is, is married to my sister.
Is married to your sister, so it's blood.
That, that's what I was getting at, but my brother's wife, there's no blood at all. I did not make this up, do not kill the messenger, I can just laugh about it and tell you that all sister-in-laws are not created equal.
This is, this is just a research.
Yeah, right. Um, so nepotism and collective bargaining is completely, has all another means. So, let me just real quickly go through the code of ethics. You hold mine, did you read the black part up there in A?
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state's order of education and court orders protecting the schools. Desireed changes shall be brought on only through legal and ethical means.
So uphold and enforce all laws, there's some rules as you're aware of, state board rules and regulations, so obviously we want you to do the right thing, don't bend the rules, don't ask anyone else to bend the rules if you think you can accomplish anything as an individual. That compromises the legal that I was established by the board. Let's just do the right thing, okay? Go ahead. Kevin?
I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children who need to be seen and developed immediately in public schools of the individual needs of all children. Regardless of ability, grades, creed, sex, or secure status.
I want to make the decisions in terms of all the children regardless of who they are, who they belong to, what they like, right? Um, you know, and special interest agendas. I will tell you that there are definitely special interest agendas at board, and I have to tell you, I was thirteen years on my board. When I first got on, I thought, oh, special interest groups, what are they, crazy kids are kids, you know, I have four, they're wonderful. Holy cow, did I get really waking, especially at ShopRite, you know? Like, and you guys will attest, I tell everybody, have an invisible bee on your forehead, you do not remember it's there, but it is there and other people see it. And as soon as they see you, they make a bee line for you, happens more with females, guys, unless it happens with experts authority or something, but typically, you know. And, and I will tell you that those special interest groups always go for the weakest link.
What, what would, what constitutes as special interest?
That would be someone who has a platform that they want you to work on, you know, if they want, um, if you did not have all they kindergarten and they were a group that was behind all they kindergarten, it might be someone that's, um, special, uh, special needs groups that sometimes the parents were formed a group and they will become very strong and they're gonna be outspoken and obviously they're passionate about it, but sometimes those folks will approach toward them who's not knowing that that's not the right avenue, that there's a chain of command. It might be, um, it might be a group, I know I have a district that.
Hot sports, sports.
Exactly, oh my gosh, oh yeah, I wasn't going there with sports, it's not just sports, uh.
No, I'm, I'm just.
But it does happen, there's an awful lot of groups that get, you know, really strong and they want their homes hurt. So they will approach board members, um, yeah, go ahead.
No, I like this group, every time you need to show me the board members, we use to verify whether we really need to report.
Yeah. You caught on pretty quick.
That's why we can't, that's why we can't certify only five, we don't have enough.
That's right, we don't know. So hypothetically, the personnel committee in response to complaints from parents sending the elementary school principal a negative evaluation of a third grade teacher, along with a note saying they have grave concerns about remaining there, first of all, I have to tell you, that's the longest of my sentences I've ever seen. But I didn't write it. Um, so the answer is absolutely no, because the only person the board evaluates is the superintendent. The board does not evaluate teachers, does not evaluate business administrator, does not evaluate anyone except the superintendent. If a parent is al, if a board member is also a parent and they have a concern, it needs to go through the chain of command also. So for example, if you have a, a second grader that you're having issue with a teacher, you take the board hat off, or like I did, I used to send my husband, and then, um, and you would go in and meet with the teacher. And then if that wasn't, you followed the chain of command, if you did not get response that met your needs, you would go to the principal. If that didn't work, you would go to the superintendent, if that didn't, you didn't come to the board. What your community also has to know is that just because you're coming before the board doesn't mean you're gonna get a different answer, but it means you get a voice, okay? It doesn't, I love this one, it says, um, I forget where it even came from, maybe it's Robert Schulze, I can't remember where I read it, but it guarantees that you have a say, but you might not get your way. I think it is, right? Okay, see, the next person, Jim, will read that. Yes, can you? No, sorry.
I, I, that's what I was getting at, that's what I'm on.
I'm sorry.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will have to frame policies and plans way up in the board as consulted those who are in effect of mine.
So basically, um, you need to leave the role of professionals to the professionals, you hired an educational leader, that's your superintendent, they need to make the day-to-day decisions. Now, what that's telling you right there, there's four functions of a board member. Policymaking, planning, oversight and appraisal, and also communication. So there's four functions of a board member, it lists three of them right there. Anything that you do falls under those four functions, and if it doesn't fall under those four functions, you're doing something you shouldn't be and you're like a manager, right? So you wanna, don't become involved in the administration or organization. When it says policymaking, you set the policy, but the administration carries out the policy, how it's done inside the school, okay? And the goals, you set the goals to move the district forward, but those goals are done, the, the action plans and the follow-out of that is to have the administration. So you're setting the framework. Next one, Marilyn.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well run.
So again, your responsibility is to work with the board to see that the schools are well-run, that's by setting the policy, setting your framework up. Um, don't think your role is to be along the day-to-day running of the schools, that's the administration's job, same thing. So a board member visiting schools to check on technology upgrades, or if you have a project that's going on, your building project, um, board member visiting those sites, that's absolutely wrong. I have one right now. I have a board president who insists on calling the man at the site manager. And superintendent calls him and says, I just called the site manager and they said, we just got off the phone with your board president. You have no idea. It happens all the time, you know, it's not, sometimes it's accidental and maybe some people don't know what they're doing, sometimes it's on purpose, and you really have to, that's when that conversation happens. But absolutely not, board members should not be in the schools, walking around the schools unless you have a specific purpose and the superintendent or the, you know, that you're there and you have a reason to be there, okay? Board's personnel committee directing superintendent to rotate the principals in the district schools? Absolutely not, not your job, administrative job. Or directing the superintendent to develop a process that engages staff, community, parents, and strategic planning initiative. That's a board big loss. You guys did that, so, absolutely. And what I will tell you here, and I probably, I think it goes into a little bit later, is the fact that when you give a directive to your superintendent, you wanna make sure the directive comes from the whole board, the majority of the board, because if, if, you know, there's four or five of us that are asking the superintendent to look into special things and it all comes back and the rest of the board doesn't vote on it anyway, you've now wasted that superintendent's time with all these different initiatives you want investigated, so it really should come from the majority of the board.
I will recognize that authority rests with the board of education and will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board.
So, you know, um, only the full board has the right to make that decision, to make decisions, so, you know, when you're out in the street and somebody's approaching you, you know, and they say to you, hey, what do we do about this, can you help me? You know, the worst thing you can do is say, oh sure, let me call the superintendent, I'll see what I can do. Wrong answer, complete wrong answer. The answer that you need to give is follow the chain of command. You need to take it up with the principal first or whoever it may be, if it's an issue that's above a teacher, it has nothing to do with the teaching staff, it's something else, you could go to the super, you could go to the principal, um, and then you go to the superintendent. But there's the chain of command, you should always, um, encourage folks to go to, through the chain of command. Now, if you are out and about and somebody approaches you with something that's extremely important and it's something that you think might, you wouldn't have an important impact, absolutely, call the superintendent. Because the worst thing you can do is have a surprise. You don't wanna come to a board meeting and surprise the superintendent or the business administrator. That is absolutely the worst thing in the world. I think all those thirteen years on the board, that was the worst thing that could happen to you. Or for, to have your administration surprise you. It goes both ways, you know?
Even at that, shouldn't that go through the board?
Sometimes, yeah, it depends, it depends on how your structure is set up.
Well, if it's that critical of an issue, I would think.
If it's that critical, I would tell you, you call the superintendent, right? What do you think? That's usually how you guys run things, right? If it's that critical, you would send it immediately to the superintendent, um.
I would think both parties should move, yeah. And I would think, I would think Tony would, you know, contact Marilyn, who has the ver.
Sure, that's certainly how your, however your board wants, you know, I'm not saying change anything. It's how your board functions, what are your bylaws said? Do you have anything? You just wanna make sure that you're functioning how your bylaws say you should be, right? And what, if you have something in policy. But typically, it's, there's no real set rule on that, it's whatever you guys feel works best here. And that's a conversation you have with the superintendent.
Like the board is, if we have, if we have a general complaint, we just bring it to the chief school administrator and let him do it, so. I mean, although we could call Marilyn or whoever, but it says that we, you know, can call CSA direct.
If it's something huge, I would say, make sure the superintendent knows, no matter who else, but make sure superintendent knows. That's the biggest piece to, um, you know, yeah.
It sounds to me like that, it's a, it's a, you, if you have to contact every board, sure, we would, we would have, yeah. If you cannot have separate lines of communication in this process.
It's not something that happens. Normally what we would do is, some things, some things like, we have questions, we call Marilyn. If something major came, I would, I would do, I would do both, I would call Marilyn and give us.
That's a, that's a good point.
I mean, I have a perfect example.
Most of the time, it's.
Yeah, I think, you know, if somebody goes to, to Jamie and says, you know, the school bus has been late for the last two days at this bus stop, that's not something to ask them to do, you know, absolutely, but if it's something, you know, I heard the kids were talking about somebody having a weapon in the high school or something, or that's, call me please.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, right, that's, absolutely, and that's really the differences that I'm talking about. Major, if you, and you guys work in committees, correct?
Yes.
So I don't know if you run, every district is different, so some districts I have where if you had a, the bus issue, you'd call, you know, if you have a transportation committee, you'd call them, or maybe Barbara, that's the committee. But you know, don't call her, but you know, every district runs just a little bit different. So it's however you have it set up, if you have it that your committee chair would take a call about something, I know, you know, but. but something just like, you know, uh, just like you said, maybe the bus was late three times, the parents, I just wanna give you a heads up. That may go to a committee chair. I'm not sure how you have it worked out, but however it is, keep doing it if the tour inquiry, okay? I'm not saying you have to change it. Next one. Go ahead, see, you're up here.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to specialistic partisan political groups. I will use the schools for personal gain and disclaim.
Exactly. So make decisions based on your district goals and policies. That's why you set them. Don't be swayed by your special interest groups again, or the political groups, which again, I think really exists in the real, real time. So the board president asking the guidance counselor to ask why the neighbor's child didn't get internationalized society. Wrong answer. Wrong answer. That is definitely not a good idea. Um, candidate running for his first term on the board promises in his campaign that he will do anything in his power to help the district start a nice, African-American share. Actually, they can't, because they're candidates. They haven't signed the Code of Ethics yet. And they can promise whatever they want. Is it a smart idea?
No.
Not really. Unless you know that the board's gonna, you know, stand behind you, but honestly, you really shouldn't be making promises. But because it's a candidate and not a board member, they can.
How about, now how about if, if you're on the board and you're running for election again?
You can still, well, if you're still a board member, no, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Board member.
Yeah. Cause you've already, you're still that board member. Yep, good point. Um, board member who asks to serve as advocate for his brother and sister-in-law when they meet in the child study team to discuss the board's opinion. No.
Obviously, no.
No, not best practice at all.
So in other words, New Jersey school board members are the only politicians in the United States who have to actually talk to the board?
Supposedly, yes, yes. Uh-huh. I don't know, every, every, I will tell you that every state has some type of Code of Ethics. Florida actually has, um, three hours of ethics training. So, um, one, one's not that bad.
That's it? That's it? Just three hours?
You have one.
Well, no, I would, when we have to go through all these G1, G2.
You have one hour. That's not all, that's not ethics. Your ethics training every year is basically going over the Code of Ethics. And it's about an hour. So, maybe we oughta go to three. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I will call confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed, will unanimously deter individuals from its focus. And all other matters are about accurate information and concerning the fellow board members to integrate with the staff and aspirations of the community for this.
Someone says that the board keep the community informed. That's your fourth function is communication on the progress and needs of the district. You really are the key communicators to your district. But it has to be the correct information that you're getting out there and not confidential information. Don't discuss confidential matters with anyone but the board. And I won't add my role comment, because you are their board. So, hypothetically, a board member during executive session texting confidential information to a member, the public is waiting outside so he or she will be able to ask specific questions to, of the board during the public comment section. Just happened again.
Again, right here.
Yeah, yeah. And happens all the time, more than you think. Really does. Yeah? And we, you know, we figured years and years ago when cell phones were first coming out, I, I, I remember, I'm like, well, we all had our phones out. Like texting wasn't quite that big at that point, you know, but phones were and, you know, so like everybody had them now. It's become just really scary. It is. They actually have, um, board members who have taken pictures of documents that can't be, you know, actually be somewhere. And it just really, it's out of hand. Really, it's, but they're using phones for everything. So, no stuff.
I will vote to put the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendations of the chief of administration.
So consider the recommendations of the superintendent on all matters pertaining to education. Don't undermine the decision of the board. In other words, um, you have hired your executive, or your educational leader, your superintendent, and hopefully you will be on the same page so that you're all looking for the same type of personnel. Doing, for example, a recommendation for a hire, so that you will, um, understand why he or she is recommending that person to you. And it doesn't take away your right to vote whatever way you want, obviously. But if a decision does not go your way, and say it's a six-two vote, uh, wouldn't it be? It'd be a six-three, yeah, or a seven-two. Uh, say it's a seven-two vote, and I'm one of the two, and it didn't go my way. What do you want me to do? Do you want me to walk out and start badmouthing that board because I think that you made a really bad decision? Or do you want me to put on my big old pants and start dealing with it and say, okay, you know what? It wasn't my choice, but I support the board. If that many of us voted for it, then let's work towards it and see if it works. You know what? It's being a team player. It really is. It's really great constantly. Go ahead.
Is being a team player also supporting the recommendation of the superintendent, even though you might have second thoughts about that recommendation?
Sure, and, and it is. It really is being a team player, but sometimes there may come a vote where you just feel so strongly about it that you feel you need to vote no. What I would tell you is that if it's personnel matter, I would really be supportive, and here's why. Because if I'm not teacher that you're gonna hire, and it's a six-three vote, five-four vote, do I really wanna work here? When you guys, I know that almost half of you don't want me? You know, that's something that you really need to think about when you're doing personnel work. But if it's anything else, and there, there may be, you know, some time when somebody is just so passionate that they feel that they need to vote no, and maybe there's a reason. Maybe they actually state why they feel that need and, and the superintendent's okay, they understand that, and that's why. But you're right, I mean, we do want you to be a team player, and that is part of it. But you can't take away someone's right to vote, you know, yes or no. So there you have it. But being a team player is a big, uh, I know.
Just a second.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I forgot.
Well, our situation is, 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 is.
And I, mm-hmm.
Does he make arrangements in his position?
No, typically not, typically not. Um, can you ask him questions? Absolutely. You know, the board can ask him questions, um.
But that would be the exception.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So I wouldn't be, yeah, wouldn't be, need that to say, appoint you.
No. No, 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 no. You, the board, the board hires the superintendent, yeah, absolutely. That's the biggest job that you do.
So would we say, so could we ask Tony, um, for, not names or anything, but say, if, if, you know, we're replacing our superintendent, what would he recommend us to be looking for? Something like that. Those are, would that be a question that would be okay to ask our superintendent?
Sure, you can ask him, absolutely, absolutely.
I tell you, so it's.
Sure, you can ask for those things because he's been here for a while, he'll get the lay of the land and, you know, kinda know the culture and, and. Sure, those are questions, you know. And, and actually, the firm that you're usually using hopefully will have met with your staff, administration, and your, um, and your community to find the criteria that you're looking for. So that you have a tone of what everyone wants, okay? And, you know, and Tony might actually be in that administrative group maybe to answer the same questions, okay? So a board member writes up an evaluation of his children's teachers, will he, will he use a combing up the speed and gives that to the principal? Oh, it's a wonderful. That's a big fat no, right?
Show it to the teacher.
What, and I, I do go right back to the only person that the board evaluates is the superintendent. Not any teachers or anyone else, even as a parent. Not your job to write an evaluation. If you have a complaint, go to the teacher and then take it through the chain of command, and then you can. The board creates a policy that directs the superintendent through the board at least two finals for every administrative position that you go. You actually can. Is that best practice? I'm not sure, because actually, he will only recommend one person. So bringing you two, does that make any sense? You know, I, I do, I do know that my superintendent, we had, the board felt like, you know, they, they were kind of becoming a rubber stamp. They wanted to just know, he, he was an amazing guy that actually hired phenomenal people. So it wasn't a matter of who were questioning the choice, it was just, how did you get to that? How did you know? How did you know? And we just wanted to kinda pick his brain a little bit. So we actually, he created, it was kinda neat. He created a sheet where he, we didn't want names, we didn't want anything else, not really background. Just tell us what stood out on candidate A and candidate B dur- like during the interview that, that made you say, this is an amazing teacher. And then he'd bring it to us and we'd kinda listen and say, wow, makes sense, you know, and it was really kinda neat. And this is why I'm proposing and I'm going to present to you candidate A, you know? And, and it was really good, but it was communication piece, that's all that was. Um, you can do this, but honestly, again, you're being recommended one person. So it doesn't make sense for that, for the superintendent to bring you the two. Because if you say you want candidate B and the superintendent brings you candidate A, now you have a little problem, right? Go ahead, who was that? I'm sorry.
Marilyn. I will support protect school personnel and proper performance of the youth.
So support and protect your personnel. Don't violate the chain of command, um, or publicly criticize staff members. I can't tell you how many times I went football games, soccer games, standing next to people and hearing all the complaints. And hopefully, it's not a board member's side mark, because you know what? That's really, really, really difficult. Okay, go ahead.
I will refer all complaints to your chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints. And, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the player or the administrative.
So, and we talked about this at one of the, we threw those pieces, and don't make any promises to help or act on those, it's yourself. Okay, so a board member criticizing the athletic director in a soccer field, we just talked about them. Board's Personnel Committee setting up a process that enables teaching staff members to bring issues directly to them in order to clear the air and improve morale. That is probably one of the worst ideas I've ever seen. Um, absolutely not, okay? As much as, and, and I will tell you flat out as a disclaimer, most of my best friends are teachers. So I say this very openly, and I tell them that the NJEA makes it very clear to their members that they have a chain of command also. That chain of command does not include calling a board member and saying, hey, can you do this for me? Hey, I've got this going on, I have one, I have a district right now where it's rampant. The president of the NJEA is constantly on the phone with the board. And it's just, it's becoming overwhelming. So it happens a lot, and it shouldn't, but they know better also. As much as we tell you as board members, you know your chain of command, and your chain of command is not to be calling staff members and saying, hey, how do you feel about that new program? Or hey, how's morale going? That's not a board member's job. So you shouldn't be reaching out to staff, and staff should not be reaching out to board members. There's an exception, if you're a parent and you're talking to that teacher about your child, that's absolutely not. But it shouldn't have anything to do with board matters, okay? There's always that illusion, illusion too, that you never know. And that's it for ethics. Um, I will tell you, in your packet on the right-hand side is one of my favorite little pieces that actually says, how many board members does it take to, uh, scroll a light bulb? None. It's not your job. It's not your job. The board says, let there be light, and the superintendent says, how much, how many, how, whatever, and the board pays for it. And that's as far as that goes. Um, there's the same thing in here, the do's and don'ts are kind of like a marital color, I guess. Um, common areas of concern are in here. Um, recusing, advisories, there's some of the theory and the practice. Um, second to the last on the right-hand side is the acknowledgement of receipt. You need to sign that, it's a white piece of paper, and you need to give that to Barbara so she can have that on hand for Q set.
Shall we get credit for this, ever?
Uh, you get credit for your ethics training, yes. Yes, absolutely.
Now, those who aren't here, they have another opportunity, I have to wait until October when, uh, school board is, uh, how does that work? Robin.
Robin, we already signed this last week and gave it to our, like, given probably to the others.
Okay. If that's what you'll accept as them knowing the Code of Ethics, that's, that's up to you guys. That's certainly your call. If you have them signed and you have them on hand, then, um, and there's a copy in the folder for you. Then that's up to you. I'll get that up to you. Okay? I, I'm not, I'm not the ethics police.
Okay, I'd say, if, if we, we're.
If you wanted me to meet with them and to go over, because there's some new board members?
Yes, yes. Jamie, still new.
Yeah, so I mean, I could certainly set up a date where I could sit with them. Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem. So, all right, any other questions? I'm really losing them, I'm so sorry. I'm like cracking like a teenager here, sorry. Um, okay, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Oh, you're welcome, thanks. And, uh, Marilyn, congratulations. Who's VP?
Thank you. Uh, Jamie Dever.
Okay, beautiful, beautiful, good. Well, congratulations, good luck. Good luck with the search. Let me know if you need anything as far as governance goes. When are you Q set, do you? Next year, maybe? You know?
Maybe, well, if we're in good shape, we're trying to figure that all out, then we can just, uh, get a pass.
They're, they're working on this, you know, hopefully, um, they're gonna maybe give you a pass.
Yeah, it's, that definitely, but I just don't, I'm trying to get, I get your last one. See what, see what our score is.
Okay, if there's anything we can help them with. All right, good night, everybody.
Thanks, I'll stay at home.
Thanks.
I know you have a right.
Well, I'm just privately.
You don't want things?
Sure.
We're chomping at the mouth.
Do you need enough?
Oh, you want your evaluation?
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you.
My team calls for a short recess now.
No, I need.
My second.
All in the, in motion, probably some motion.
Yes, let me take a motion and take a, take a.
Recession until seven thirty?
Short recess before our, before our meeting reconvenes at, let's say, seven thirty?
Second.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion varies. We will, um, reconvene our meeting at seven thirty.
You can all primp, primp up and get ready for your pictures.
I just have a question with regards to the workshop, uh, two thousand and fourteen that they're having, um, in fact, it's Saturday. Yeah, you have to pay two hundred dollars, but you're not gonna necessarily see all the workshops that are being offered? Or are you going to attend every single one and that's the way the agenda runs?
Well, I need your question, Scott, and I have a question.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, but I would have liked to, I would have, first, my first credit, I thought it was for everything. And then I, and then I didn't know it was it.
Yeah, only highlights.
He's, he couldn't even sit in on all the highlights from the workshop at this one meeting, I realized. But there were like two things that I wanted to see, and two hundred dollars on this one.
I don't know if, I don't know if I'm, I guess there's some requests, and the one I did from prior.
That's the one I'm, that I couldn't get to at workshop.
Ah, see, I was thinking.
Now, 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 one of the, the dogs. So you don't? You've already got them.
You can give it to me if you sign it.
Yeah, I guess that was like. All right, how you doing?
One other one I can think of now, but.
Did you not know? Did you not know?
No, I, I, I totally overlooked.
I.
I went through the, I went through it, but I didn't, it didn't focus, I probably got focused. I, I, I.
Last night.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't catch it.
So I confirmed it this morning.
You can call me.
You ready to go to school proper?
Yeah, you're straight.
You ready for us?
Yeah, absolutely, um, so you guys are ready, come on, come on.
Well, we don't, we don't have everyone here.
Oh, that's right, no. We're just gonna do a group picture?
Um, please hear an individual's, if I don't have, I can.
I don't know. Cause I can.
My wife's kidding, I don't.
No, she's good. She was good.
There was substance.
Yeah. No, it's a little, uh, it's a little farther back, that's, that's like.
Yeah.
That's strange, that's my, that's my move, that's my answer. That's, that's not a place for it. So, that's it.
It's easy for it's gonna do. Well, right here. It's not purpose.
Test, test, hello, hello, test. Hello, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Last test, test, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Can I borrow you for one big group shot of everybody?
Yeah, we'll go.
Do I need you guys for a group shot of all board members? Nope, all right.
Barbara, you have to be in the picture.
Hello, how are you? Nothing and everything.
He shakes my hands every day and. You good, don't worry. Next Friday, you ready?
Got you.
I heard, we're chomping at the mouth. Thirteen years ago. You're on, once again?
Yeah. Great idea.
How are you?
Oh, yes, thank you. Boy, grab the nine, one, all the class. How are you? Oh, God, yeah. It's wonderful, being represented too. Oh, God, I just got my hair done, hopefully. How's that feeling, Mark? You know, just got back to school, started today, Freddie's like, oh, yeah, like, oh, can I, like, drop this off? And I'm like, oh. He's only caring anymore, he's just, he's just, he's just. The major. He did have a, a job interview for an internship. He's only gone this summer, haven't heard anything yet. It seems like he keeps getting all these all-person go-to-sport and then the door slams, you know? I know, it's just, oh, that's true. So, and that's how I'm hoping that he stays, I guess, get that. Glad things are going good for you too. Hey, happy journey, too, thank you, how are you? Wow, I think that.
Did we get the? What's up today? This is the power.
Oh, my God, I thought you were. Good eve- good evening, everybody. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Um, we left off at superintendent's report.
Yep. Uh, the boards just went through a, uh, ethics training, of course, through school board, so that's what we completed. And we're gonna move forward. Um, the first thing I'd like to do is invite a very important gentleman up here. Uh, post commander, veteran of foreign wars, Mr. Patrick Lomond, come on up. And also the district commander, Mr. Bill Johnson, to come up. Because we have some students we'd like to recognize this evening for, well, I'm gonna let these gentlemen explain it to you because, uh, it's networkers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're, we're here to present the awards for our Voice of Democracy contest, which is a scholarship contest. And if you are not familiar with the Voice of Democracy contest, I just have a little official ditty here to let you know what we're talking about. Each year, nearly forty thousand high school students from across the country enter to win a share of the two point two million dollars in educational scholarships and incentives awarded through the VFW's Voice of Democracy audio essay competition. The VFW established the Voice of Democracy program in nineteen forty-seven to provide students grades nine through twelve the opportunity to express themselves in regards to democratic ideals and principles. The national first-place winner receives thirty thousand dollar scholarship, ladies and gentlemen, thirty thousand dollars. Pay directly to the recipient's American university, college, or vocational technical school. Our national scholarship range from one thousand to sixteen thousand dollars. And the first-place winner from each state department wins an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC.
And five thousand.
And five thousand. That's pennies. So, uh, this is a worthwhile competition and, uh, through the help of, uh, the school, the high school, uh, we run this competition every year and we have three winners for second and third. Our first place. Our first place winner has an excellent essay, and he's going to read it to you so you can hear what we're talking about. And we also have their awards and plaques from the post. Unfortunately, it only went this far for our three contestants. I hope that does not discourage them or anyone else. I hope next year they do it again. They now sort of know the rules. The rules are kind of stringent, and you have to follow them to the letter. So it's always good to have somebody repeat and come back. And we hope that they do and not get discouraged at this time. And at this point, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Bill Johnson. He is the district commander of the district here for the VFW. And he was nice enough to come here and support me and to give out the awards to these special people. So with that, I'll give this over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Pat. Actually, I used to work for Pat. Now I'm his boss. We always liked that. This is really a valuable program that the VFW has been doing for so many years. And most of the winners at the top end have participated before or five years, gotten better at it as they went along. And so we want to encourage the parents and the teachers to encourage the kids to participate every year. And they also get a little stipend even at this level. So we're very proud of them, and we're very proud of the things that they write and say. It is sort of refreshing in this day and age to find out that there are some kids out there who still understand what's going on and why, and how we became the country that we are. So our first place winner was Matt Ventilla. Matt. Stand there where they can see it. Now, they can talk later to stand where they can see it. We'll let you talk. John Gomez. All right, this says that veterans of foreign war had the Voice of Democracy award citation presented to. This one's for Andrea. And sincere appreciation and recognition valuable cooperation and assistance rendered on behalf of the Voice of Democracy audio essay competition.
Each, our little envelopes there are sales receipts for Ferraris. Oh, no, they're what we award our winners. And third place is fifty bucks, and second place is a hundred bucks, and first place is a hundred and fifty bucks. I wish it was the thirty thousand dollar award, but at least it pays for anything they use to write the essay. And if it's all right with our first place winner, I would like to have him read his very excellent essay for us.
Oh, good. Good evening, members of the board, members of the VFW posts, teachers, students, parents. Thank you, everybody in attendance tonight. I'd like to share a little story that I wrote for you. It's about a young boy named Johnny Smith who goes to Washington, D.C. for the first time on a school field trip. One day, the energetic Johnny Smith ran excitedly over to his grandfather, a Vietnam War veteran. "Grandpa, grandpa," cried Johnny, "guess where I'm going for my eighth grade field trip." He could hardly wait for his grandfather's guess and exclaimed with emotion, "I get to go to Washington, D.C., our nation's capital." The boy's grandfather gazed at him with a smile on his face, a look in which of itself expressed an ineffable proudness. He was glad to see that his grandson would finally get to travel to our nation's capital and experience our nation's history. The grandfather spoke with wisdom toward his grandson, saying, "That's great, Johnny, and I'm very happy for you. But there's one question that I want you to investigate for me while you're exploring our nation's capital. That is, why are veterans important to our nation's history and future?" The boy nodded his head and was eager to discover the answer to his grandfather's question. As the bus drove down Constitution Avenue in Washington, Johnny Smith gazed with amazement at all the white marble buildings which towered over him. He had just spent the year completing his first American history class and couldn't wait to experience all that he had just learned. His class saw the typical field trip sites in D.C., the White House, the Capitol, the Smithsonian, et cetera. He enjoyed all of them, and when seeing each one, he felt lighthearted and carefree. He cherished all these brilliant sights, but Johnny did not yet fully comprehend why all of this was possible. That evening, Johnny and his class visited the National Mall, the home of the Vietnam War Memorial. As they strode along the path which led to the wall, the solemn atmosphere around the wall struck him immediately. He felt the somber silence, and the sight before him was unfathomable. There stood the long black wall of stone upon which the names of our nation's fallen heroes were inscribed in order to be honored infinitely. As Johnny strode along the path, he could not believe the sight before his eyes. There were hundreds of names on each panel of the wall, and there were hundreds of panels on the wall, over fifty-eight thousand names in total. The names seemed to stretch on without limit, and each one remembered a fallen soldier. The boy shed tears thinking about what was before him. All of these men and women had died in this one war, and to think about how many wars there have been in our nation's history and in the history of the world. Too many deaths, too many casualties. It was not, it was at this moment of viewing the wall that the boy experienced a revelation. Their sacrifices must not be forgotten, their efforts shall not have been done in vain. The boy realized that all the other sights which he had seen and loved were possible because of the brave men and women who had fought and died so that others may live freely. Our nation was won by the courage of veterans, and we must honor them and preserve our history. Since those who forget history often repeat it, future generations must not forget the war. They must be educated of humanity's past in order to better the future. What Johnny in this story is trying to express is that veterans are important to our nation's history and future for two main reasons. First, that nearly all of our history has been able to occur largely because of the bravery and selflessness of our nation's military. Secondly, that veterans are vital to the future security and freedom of our nation. This is because by honoring our nation's veterans, we not only repay them with greatly deserved respect, but we also teach our future generations the importance of sacrifice and valor. From our nation's founding, veterans have played an essential role in America. During the Revolutionary War, it was the brave soldiers and militiamen who offered their lives fighting for our nation's independence and fighting to better the lives of their posterity. It is inarguable that today we are a nation because of their efforts. Their descendants later fought bravely during the Civil War in order to preserve what their forefathers had won ninety years earlier. In doing so, they helped to promote the American ideals of universal freedom and equality of all citizens. They truly saved the Union, flash forward another eighty years to World War II. With the world in chaos, our soldiers once again answered the call to arms and fought to ensure freedom around the globe. They protected our nation while simultaneously promoting our ideals to better the world. This virtue has been seen more recently in the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the ongoing war against terrorism. American men and women have bravely answered the call to lead when others would not. American men and women have stood up to protect our nation's rights and the rights of other nations when others would not. Today, the world is in need of leaders, and who is better to lead than our nation's veterans? As we look towards the future, it is essential that our students not only learn about these important periods of history, but that they also learn about the actual men and women that define those eras. These men and women are none other than our nation's veterans. They're the definition of sheer dedication and selflessness. By personally interacting with, assisting, and learning from our veterans, it is the first step of expressing our endless gratitude. We must now stand up for our veterans as they have done for us. They will teach us volumes about the importance of self-sacrifice. In order to look towards the future, we must first learn from and honor those brave men and women that came before us. Upon returning home, Johnny Smith approached his grandfather. As his grandfather looked at him, he said, "Johnny, did you get to look into that question that I asked you about earlier?" His grandson smiled proudly at his grandfather, saluted him, and said, "I did, grandpa. I just wanted to say thank you."
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank also all the teachers and the parents and the students that participated and the Board of Education for allowing our program to exist in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick and Bill, thank you so much. We like working with the community. We're happy to work with the VFW and certainly honored to be part of this program, and we're very happy for our students. And with that being said, Matthew, that was an excellent speech, excellent writing, and we're very proud of you. Have you been to the War Memorial over in D.C.? Have you seen that?
I have. It was kind of an illusion about, like, my personal experience.
Okay, great. It's that and the Kareem War Memorial is the one that really, seeing those figures up in place, is very touching. So great job. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to, each one of you, please come on up. To Matthew, again, and John, and to Andrea. This is from us. Congratulations. We're very proud of each and every one of you.
Where's that check?
Says, "Well." I was waiting for Mr. Foodie. Didn't quite finish running out the check. And it has here that attained recognition for the, as a winner of the VFW Voice of Democracy essay contest and is hereby awarded the certificate and is signed by our board president, Ms. Marilyn Schultz, and also by Lisa. Congratulations. We're very proud of all of you, and keep up the good work. All right, I think at this time I'd like to, Nicolette, are you ready to give a little report? And then we can do our first thing.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and a personal hello from me, from the board members. This year's Scarban full of new opportunities and success for students at Westmoreford High School. Beginning with athletics, all of our winter sports are officially in session. The bowling team is off to a great start and is undefeated eleven and oh with victories against Lake Blantineck and Wayne Hills. The ice hockey team is also doing well with victories over Wayne Valley Northern, Allen's Lake Minn, and Newton during the regular season. Recently, our varsity wrestling team has had an exciting experience at Madison Square Garden, an event called the Gravel at the Garden. And speaking of travel, our boys' basketball team is in three games at Disney over winter break, while the girls' basketball participated in the Butler Holiday Tournament. As for individual athlete recognition, congratulations to senior Eric Olsen for being included in the New Jersey Football Coaches Association Super One Hundred. And congrats to senior Joe Fanyo of the ice hockey team, who is named the New Jersey Devils' Player of the Month for December. Regarding academic competitions, this month, the high school English department spearheaded a school qualifier for poetry out loud, a national poetry representation contest. Poetry out loud encourages students to memorize and explore poetry while promoting public speaking skills. After winning the competition at the Westmoreford Coffee House, freshman Emma Doris will advance to the next level. Also, this past weekend, our model unit nation's team experienced success during a four-day conference at Columbia University in Newark City, in which twenty delegates took on the roles of ambassadors, statesmen, council members, and CEOs in order to take on our world's most pressing issues. Ultimately, we won one third place title and four fourth place titles. I'm also, I'm also proud to announce the success of our band students and their auditions this past weekend from the New Jersey Region Band. Sixteen students recently placed into our region's wind ensemble and symphonic bands, with two students earning the decision of first chair for their respective instruments. Next, thanks to the facilitation of our guidance department, January has been an excellent month for exam, college, and career preparation. After a break, juniors receive their PSAT score reports from guidance alongside tools that will help them interpret their scores and view them online. On Thursday, January eighth, Alumni Day was held, in which graduates from the classes of twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen visited our students in order to inform them about their academic, extracurricular, vocational, and living experiences at college. On Monday, the twelfth, our pals in National Honor Society members led freshman transition groups, briefing the freshmen on how to prepare and effectively study for midterm examinations. Afterwards, seniors participated in a soft skill workshop that focused on important skills such as interview confidence and resume building. All of these endeavors definitely speak to recent parent survey results, which show that about seventy-three percent of Westmoreford parents feel that their children are being adequately prepared for their future after attending the high school, a figure far above that of the first surveys taken in two thousand and four, which was in the sixtieth percentile. As for upcoming events, tomorrow, students will attend an assembly on suicide awareness, and on February fourth at six p.m., there will be a baptism workshop for the parents of our college bound seniors in the upper media center. Lastly, the second marking period officially ends on Tuesday, February third, and all grades will be finalized the week before. That's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Nicolette. I didn't know if I missed something. Did you have the one in this past Sunday with the indoor holagogue had a competition here at the school with about thirteen other teams? And we were concerned about the weather, especially with all the ice, but that did take place, so that was a good event for all of us. And certainly, I just want to comment on the Alumni Day. That was my first time to actually sit in a little bit and see that, and very impressed with the, first of all, the number of students that actually came back to share their experience in college. And they met with supervisors, they were in classrooms with teachers and students. I, overall, Mr. Hessler, thank you for hosting at the high school. I thought that was a wonderful program for everybody, so it's a great job. At this time, who am I calling on first this evening? Two presenters, okay. So Ms. Jennifer Miller will be doing a presentation from Paradise Knoll School. As you know, each board meeting, we've been having a featured principal or two, and tonight, Ms. Miller will be doing again the presentation from Paradise Knoll. Thank you, Jen, for being here.
Thank you, everybody. It's okay. I think I'm going to speak from this side. I tend to not do it by the throat, but if you can't hear me, I certainly will flip over to the other side. Just also don't want to give anybody my back, so if I stand here, I can think of somebody. I suppose we're going to use the bar. Turn the screen off because I'm getting a bit sweaty in your eyes. It's warming up.
Yeah, the light, the light is on.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Miller, and I'm the principal of Paradise Knoll School. Sorry, new board members, new board members getting their pictures taken tonight. As you know, that gentleman who's taking his pictures, and you'll happen to notice that in my presentation, I have more slides with photos than I have of words. Because I like to show you what's really going on at Paradise Knoll with teaching and learning. So you're going to, you're going to see a lot of pictures of teachers and students interacting based on the three areas that we're focusing on in building this year for improvement. Our first building goal for this year is that we are going to be applying for a promising practice award through School of Character as we prepare to apply as a school of character next year. So the Promising Practice Award is a smaller award, but still, still a very honorable award to receive. And working with, in conjunction with the building-based character education committee that's comprised of teachers, what we did this year was we added another layer to that where we created a character ambassador club of students. And instead of using the teachers to kind of run what we call our spirit assemblies at Paradise Knoll, we're now using our student ambassadors, our character ambassadors, to run those assemblies and make them more meaningful. So some of the things that we were doing last year that we kind of tweaked and have enhanced this year, we're still doing our character token incentive, meaning that students are given tokens of good character that they can come down to the main office and visit with me and share with me their, their act of good character and receive a small kind of token from, from me. But we have focused each month on an actual character trait, so we do all of our teaching that month about that particular trait. So September was respect and so on. Whereas last year, we were, we were kind of including every, every trait within each month. This year, we're, this year, we're more focused per month. When students do come down with their tokens, they're also awarded brag tags by me, which they get to wear for the entire day, and they symbolize in some way what their act of character was. So, for example, if they were helping out another student or another friend, their brag tag might say, "Helping hands" or "helpful friend." And then throughout the day, other students can say, "Hey, what did you do to get that brag tag?"
And then throughout the day, other students can say, "Hey, what did you do to get that brag tag?" And then they're kind of spreading the good message of their act of character to their classmates. We do have spirit assemblies each month where we recognize all of the students for their acts of good character. But again, we're using those student ambassadors, those character ambassadors this year, to actually teach formal lessons on the next month's trait to get students ready for what they're gonna be focusing on in the next month. And they're using the students who are recognized that month for receiving a token of good character within the assembly. So, it's all completely student-driven and student-involved. I was kind of all out of ideas last year, where I was kind of running them and writing the agendas for each of them. The students have far better ideas than I have, and including them more has been just so much more fulfilling for them. We also have some challenges going on throughout the year, either year-long or month-long, to motivate positive behavior and to incentivize acts of good character and encourage widespread use of our Project Adventure core values. So, here you see some students who received character tokens. They came down to my office, they get their brag tags. You can see them hanging around their necks there. They also receive a little slip of paper that goes home to mom and dad that kind of outlines what it was that they did in school that day that was a particular good act of character. So, mom and dad can talk to them about that act at home and encourage them to continue along that path. This is our current challenge incentive that we have going for the month of January. This is our behavior on the school bus, as well as our polite interactions with our bus driver and with our friends on the bus. So, students are encouraged to use their appropriate manners, say hello to their bus driver in the mornings, speak to each other kindly on the bus. And then, what I did was I went ahead and took all the bus driver's pictures. These did not come out as well as my husband's pictures. You all, I'm sure, will. But just to also kind of put these with a name and to have students get to know their bus driver, bus drivers are then using a little rating sheet that I gave them, just rating the interactions between the students that day. And at the end of the month, we'll tally up all the rating sheets. As you can see, I have a running tally going right now, so the students can see which class is kind of in the lead as far as we have the best bus behavior. At the end of the month, they will receive a handsome reward. That strange ugly thing in the middle is the golden spatula. The golden spatula is motivating our wonderful lunch and recess behavior. My physi teacher, Mrs. Jo Cullen, has the golden sneaker in PE. So, I decided that I would kind of riff on her idea and create the golden spatula. So, as you can see on the left, these are the rules that are followed during lunch and recess, where we are cleaning up after ourselves, we're following directions and listening to our lunch aids. We're lining up quietly to head out to recess. We're coming back inside in an orderly fashion. So, as long as each day they meet all of those requirements, the students' lunch aids are then putting a stamp on their spatula that is also hanging in the cafeteria. The stamp is a four-foot spoon. It's really cute. I'm sure you can't see it from there, but... So, each class has a spatula, and when they reach 10 stamps on their spatula, the golden spatula hanging there in the middle is in their classroom in the morning. And I announce over the PE speaker in the morning which class has the golden spatula. And they absolutely love and enjoy being recognized for their polite and respectful behavior in the lunchroom and at recess. I did dip that spatula in the cold water. We also use our spirit assemblies to focus on our core values through Project Adventure. So, these are just some examples of the spirit assembly from September, where the teachers separated their classes out within the all-purpose room there, and we set goals for the year as a class, short-term and long-term goals. So, this is an example of each class working together to set some short and long-term goals. And then those large Otag sheets are hanging in each classroom, so that the teacher can refer back to those goals. This month, being January, and kind of New Year's resolutions and midway through the year, as an activity during this month, they will revisit their goals and look and see how many of them they have already met and what they can do to strategize to ensure that they meet any long-term goals that they have not yet met. Our other area of focus this year is English Language Arts Instruction. We're constantly focusing on implementing best practices in guided reading, as it is shown to be the best tool to move readers along the ladder of progress. As a school, as a faculty, we collect data and analyze all of our Founders in Penile records, our conferring notes. We have regular communication between all the teachers, the encore teacher, the reading specialist, the resource room teachers. We also have a school-based guided reading committee that we did start as part of a building-based school last year. We're continuing that work as well. And what they do, in addition to the rest of the faculty, is they move us forward in terms of they are studying professional books. Right now, we're reading The Next Step in Guided Reading. They're attending workshops such as the Saturday reunion at Columbia University. And they're turnkeying all of these great ideas and good practices back to the faculty in faculty meetings. And we're constantly doing those to learn and to ahead. So, again, we're continuing the work of the teacher-based guided reading committee that was started last year. The book room is, for the most part, finished. At Paradise Knoll, we did not have a location for materials that are needed for guided reading, but we were fortunate enough to kind of complete that and turn an unused space, actually an old custodial closet, into the book room. So, now teachers have a place to go to find these materials that they need to facilitate guided reading instruction. And we're adding, now this year, we're adding to those materials by creating centers, so that teachers also have a place to go to find center materials that they can just actually bring right back into their classroom and begin to facilitate those centers right away. Just some examples of what some of our classrooms look like in terms of related literacy or guided reading. And our third area of focus this year is, again, continuing our focus on mathematics. We started a very specific focus last year at Paradise Knoll to create and implement instructional and learning opportunities for students so that they were more actively engaged in mathematics. And God forbid, having a little bit of fun at the same time. So, again, we're continuing work with our teacher-based Making Math Fun Committee. We are also creating centers for mathematics so that we can implement almost a guided math model, similar to guided reading, where the teacher can pull students to a small table and work with them more intensely, one-on-one or in small group. We also needed a place for these math materials, for teachers to find manipulatives and centers to be able to pull them to implement into their classroom. So, again, I was resourceful and found an unused space in the building. There are not many left. An old closet that had lots of things in it that needed to be moved out. So, we have the book room, and now we have the math closet. And that is where we are housing all of our math manipulatives and where teachers can find centers that they can easily take out and put into their classroom and begin to implement those right away. Our building-based math committee has a lot of teachers on it that also serve on the district committee that our math coach, Rachel, Rachel Bishan, has started. So, that's a great dialogue between what goes on on the district level and then back to the building level at PK. We also are discussing creating these engaging lessons and using these centers and how to collect data back from students, so that we can quantify whether they are truly engaged, whether they are truly learning through these engaging lessons. And then we also share those ideas out in faculty meetings. We also share out, again, those ways to collect data back from the classroom teachers to ensure that students are becoming engaged with some of these ideas that we've implemented. One of these such ideas last year, we created, during fourth-grade teachers and myself, we created a competition called Math Wars, where students worked collaboratively in groups across the two grade levels. And they competed in solving high-level math word problems. And they worked on that in the classroom over several weeks. And then ultimately, the competition took place at school during one afternoon. And they had an absolute blast, and it was just really fun watching them problem-solve and work through mathematics together across grade levels. So, we are going to expand Math Wars this year. We will not only have a third and fourth grade competition, but we're gonna move it up to fifth and sixth grade. So, we'll be having two Math Wars this year. This is an example of data collection. This teacher uses a woodstuck with a new board, where each student has a student number. And after one of her fun, engaging lessons that she created, she asks students three questions. They answer those questions on sticky notes, and then they leave them right on their student number, so she can go back later and look through their feedback. So, she's checking for understanding with one of those questions, or two of those questions. And then the third question, again, she was trying to collect data on, "Did you have fun? Was this lesson engaging? Would you want to do something like this again?" So, that's just another level of data that we're trying to collect from our students to continue to move forward with the fun, engaging lessons that we're trying to plan for students. Again, just some examples of the different center ideas that teachers may be using in their classrooms. The top photo there is a fun and engaging way that our encore teacher has her students who are struggling a little bit with math, working on their math facts on their own. They each have their own little leprechaun, and they are trying to get to the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And we finally have some place to house these wonderful things. Again, going back to that, now we have the book room and the math closet. This is inside the math closet, where we have everything organized. Teachers can go in. They're doing a lesson where they need manipulatives or counters or blocks or counting cubes. All these things live in the math closet. They can go right in, pull these things down, and facilitate those lessons right away. They don't have to scramble around, ask colleagues for things. They just have them right there as a go-to. And teachers are also creating centers where those tubs in the right-hand photo there could just be taken into a classroom and, again, facilitated right away. We are always focused on student achievement at Paradise Knoll and helping every student meet their greatest success. And we really believe with these three core areas of focus that we will, again, do that this year. So, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. I think we're gonna transition into some testing now.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Nice to see all the activities going on and how you're trying to figure out. Well, with all of that transition, if you don't mind, I can, this way we get everything set up for the UK. I'd like to report on the mid-year report from our HIB policy. This goes to the state. It's set to the state. Unfortunately, I was gonna print out some information for you, but the font is about size one. So, I will discuss this verbally and then give you the package. Of course, we do have to vote on accepting this at the next meeting. So, I just wanted to run it through quickly. And it's kind of a good transition from what Jen was talking about, the character education. The things that they look at, element number one includes all HIB programs and initiatives within the district. Element two is training of the Board of Ed on the Board of Ed-approved HIB policy. That's our policy. Element number three, other staff instruction, things that we do in the schools other than what's in the policy itself. Go on to curriculum instruction with HIB, related information and skills. This will include things that come from attorneys, really the courses that the HIB specialists and the supervisors partner and so forth. And then we move on to personnel. Incident reporting, investigation procedures. If you know the HIB policies, we're reporting them to the Board of Education. They are quite extensive as far as investigations that are placed. And number eight is HIB reporting, how we report these. So, I am happy to report to everybody in the community and to the school board. Basically, if I look back at the scores from 2012, 13, the highest you can receive on these scores is a 75. Last year, we scored a 64, which was okay. I mean, you know, moving along. But happily, I just want to give you a little breakdown as to the current scores for the 2013, 14. This is called the mid-year report, because the information was given to us in December. So, in the category of programs and approaches, the maximum score is 15. Our scores were between 12 and 14. The maximum score for training on the Board of Ed-approved HIB policy is a 9. We scored between 6 and 8. Staff instruction, maximum is 15. We scored between 12 and 14. On the curriculum instruction embedded into our schools, the highest score is a 6. All of our schools received a 6. Personnel, HIB personnel, highest score is a 9. We scored between 7 and 9. When I say between, because we have so many schools, that's the range of numbers that we have. School-level HIB incident reporting procedures, maximum number is 6. We scored a 5. And investigation procedures, the highest score is 12. We have a 12. And HIB reporting, straight 6. No, sorry, it's a 6, but we scored between 4 and 6. And finally, the overall grade for this year for the Westmoreford schools is 70. So, we went up six points. And again, the highest score is 78. So, six points is something to be proud of, and I think we're in the right direction. And you can see that happening, you know, if you visit your children's schools. Us as board members get these reports and presentations from principals. You can clearly see that everybody is focusing in on having students understand the right things to do and that when they make mistakes, because everybody makes mistakes, we're gonna have to support them and instruct them the right ways to go about these things and make things right. So, I'm happy to report that to you. I will have a nice package for you for the next meeting that we just looked on and all agree on, hopefully. But it is, it's good stuff. We moved it to six points and we're moving in the right direction, so that's good. All right? So, the other area where we'd like to go, you know, of course, looking at student success, would be in the area of the testing. And as most of us know, starting in March of this year, and again, in May, we will have the PARC assessments, which are brand-new to every school, district, and state, along with a few other states. But it's been very, very taxing. It's created some anxiety among everyone, because we don't know exactly what's happening. We've had some trial testing going on last spring, which went well for us. But the real program, the real testing starts this year. So, with that in mind, Ms. Brennan, Kate Brennan, who's our test coordinator for the district, has been going around to a couple of different schools. There's a schedule on our website that explains where these meetings are. I did attend the very first one. It was a very nice job. But I did invite her here this evening so that you, other community members, can see this. And also, more importantly, I would like the board to understand what this testing is about. Because we talked about it before the block. We talked about spending money on computers and other software and things that we need to make this happen. And I thought that would be beneficial for us, have a better understanding. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Kate Brennan. Thank you.
Um, so, thank you very much for your attention this evening. I would like to first welcome the board members and welcome each and every member. For those of you who don't know me, I am less to be the district testing coordinator, mainly the department of operations of Brennan. And I'd like to start with this slide that is on our Core Families tab on our district website, that not only lists my contact information, but as well as all of the members of the testing team. We have a building testing coordinator, and each one of our buildings... And I have listed the contact information for each one of those members. Also on that page, you'll find a list of all of the state assessments that we do throughout the course of the year, as well as some of our district testing. However, just as Mr. Rashida said, this evening, I will be focusing our conversation on the PARC assessment, which is the sub-tab. Okay, so, I'd just like to spend a little bit of time discussing what is PARC? And what is the acronym? It's the Partnership for Assessments and Readiness for College and Careers. The Assessment Ensemble, there's two of them in the nation, PARC is one of them, goes to measure a student's readiness for college and careers as well as their proficiency against the common core state standards. I have provided some factual information about PARC. I'm not going to go over everything that's on the website with you this evening. I encourage you to attend one of my parent sessions for some more in-depth look at what PARC is and the various types of test questions that are involved, as well as some of the sample items. So, if you attend a parent session, one of which will be upgraded to our P-K at high school, we will actually sit at computers and look at some of the sample assessments. I also encourage you to look at one of the videos that I have posted a link to. It is a video that I think is very worthwhile, because it comes from the National PTA. So, it is not a source that is connected to PARC. However, they have created a series of videos to explain to parents, what is PARC? Why are we doing PARC? And how can it be beneficial to our students and to our students? However, they have created a series of videos to explain to parents, what is PARC, why are we doing PARC, and how can it be beneficial to our students and to our students. So, who is participating in PARC? All students in grades three through eleven will be participating in this year's PARC assessment, and we believe that will be the case going forward. The PARC assessments are administered in two twenty-day windows, so it's a total of forty days of testing capability. That does not equate to forty days of testing, but we'll get to the actual amount of time that we will be spending testing in just a moment. However, the testing window that is provided by the state allows us to test at any point during that window. Okay, so twenty days for the PBA, which is the performance-based assessment that begins in March. And then twenty days again for the end-of-year assessments that begin in late April. Now you'll notice that for the EOI, which is the end-of-year assessment, there is a difference in dates between grades three through eight, as well as for grades nine through eleven. And that difference of a week is to accommodate the AP testing that will happen in the high school in May. So we get to start the EOI PARC assessment early in the high school, and trust me, we will be taking advantage of that extra week of time. Okay, so, I wanted to give you a rough schedule of when students in which grade levels will be testing. Okay, so if you take a look, those are the times that we have scheduled for the majority of the students to take that assessment by grade level. Okay, however, if there are students who are testing with extended time or other setting accommodations, and by that I mean small group, one-on-one, et cetera, et cetera, then their schedule will be slightly different because it is based on rules of the students, as well as our availability of technology and facilities, as well as faculty. Okay, now, again, I would like to just return to the idea that even though these are the dates that we have scheduled for testing, we can test students anytime during that twenty-day testing window. So that gives us time if there is a closure during inc- uh, inclement weather, there is an ability to be flexible with our schedule in the case that we have a hiccup with technology. We are testing in all nine buildings at the same time. Okay, and I have full confidence, when I develop that schedule, that we will be able to do it. Our technology team is ready, we have vetted the system via the pilot last year. Our technology has surpassed many other districts, we have met all the readiness standards, we've surpassed all the readiness standards, and I truly believe that we will be ready to tackle this. But in event that we are not, we do have that extra time built into that with that. Okay, so I mentioned the twenty days for the testing window several times. And on the website, what I have actually done is created a table to show you the actual testing time in total. So this is a chart in minutes, okay? So if you're looking at the chart, you'll see that the average third grader is allotted three hundred and sixty minutes to take the assessment. And the third grade will be taking one unit per day, because this is their first date assessment, we didn't want to wear them out. We wanted to make sure that we were testing them in the best-case scenario, so they will actually take a full week to test it. Now, the number underneath the three sixty is the estimated time on task. So, based on the pilot, the PARC consortium has decided that their data supports that an average student will take this amount of time to test for all five units. And that's two hundred and thirty minutes, so there's quite a, a difference in this. You can see there's a lot of extra time built in for students, and every student is entitled to that extra time built into the unit. Students in grades three through eight will take, will be about the three hundred and seventy-five minutes, of which we should probably be using two hundred and fifty-five. And the ninth grade in high school students will be taking three hundred and sixty minutes, of which they expect the two hundred and sixty to be utilized for testing. Now, you'll see that there is a difference between the way that the chart is organized for grades three through eight and the high school. And that's because the high school is different based on the course that they're taking for mathematics. So while grades three through eight are based upon their grade level mathematics assessment, students who are enrolled in Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry are taking course-based assessments. And it does include, by the way, some of our students in honors and eighth grade at mathematics. Okay, there is a similar chart, by the way, up there for the EOI, which again, we will begin in late April. Okay, so what are the devices that are being used? I have to say once again that we put a lot of thought and work in with our technology department in what devices are most appropriate for our students to be testing? How are we going to facilitate this testing? How are we going to manage the bandwidth and so forth and so on? You have been very generous in providing us with Chromebooks in every school, and I am very, very grateful for that. And we do intend on using them first in the PBA grades five and six, as well as students in the Highlander Academy, and any students with a setting or timing accommodation, because they have to test in a small group, we will not test them in the media center on the basis. Going forward in the EOI, we're hoping that more classes and grade levels will be utilizing Chromebooks for testing. We also made sure to have device equity, and that is why some of the decisions that we made regarding what grade levels we're using, what devices were made, because we wanted to make sure that every student in a grade level, regardless of which building they're testing in, is utilizing the same device. I also would like to have you rest assured that students who require special accommodations are provided those during the PARC assessment. I have provided the link on there to the Accessibility Features and Accommodations Manual. Accessibility features are universal design, design features. They're actually available to all students regardless of an IP or a 504, to help the student better engage with the assessment. Now, the accommodations, on the other hand, are for students with 504s or IUPs with identified needs. So for parents who might have concerns about the assessment and how it is being facilitated to their students, the state has asked us to provide that link to, so the entire manual is there. And again, I have worked very, very closely with Stuart Rudin and Lisa Quaid in regards to making sure that our students are truly getting what they need from the system. The PARC website for parents is actually from PARC and has a whole bunch of resources for understanding the assessment. There is a glossary of terms which I've provided as a separate link. If you're interested in specifics of what is being tested, what kinds of questions are going to appear on the assessment, I have provided those links as well from here for ELA and mathematics, as well as text, word count guidelines. I'd like to be clear on what this is. This is not the requirement of how much the students are being asked to write, or rather guidelines that are provided by the PARC consortium and creating the blueprints for the tests so that they could find appropriate texts. Okay, so for instance, the ELA assessment has students really engaging in writing to illustrate an ability on analyzing text. It starts with an anchor text, which introduce, introduces a topic, and then has supporting media. Okay, the supporting media could be indeed another text, several texts, it could be an audio of a speech, it could be a video, and that's what the students have to, are headphones for the assessment. However, the word count guidelines is a s- a specifier for how long the text is allowed to be by grade level. Okay, so that really is to just help me what is appropriate for the students and to. There are also some key terms that I would like each parent to engage their students in conversation to prepare for the assessment. There has been some research done in both consortiums regarding assessments for the Common Core, and several, several more noteworthy educators have come up with a list of terms that have been found most commonly in this assessment. So, what is the difference between comparing and contrasting and explaining? It's really necessary for a student to understand the difference between those terms before they can truly master this assessment. And I will assure you that our teachers across the district are aware of this list, and hopefully working with their students so that they truly understand these terms and prepare to use them for the assessment. The other thing that is provided here are the samples, and again, I encourage you to attend one of my parent workshops, where you will sit down at computers and look at the grade level assessment that your child will be taking. There is also a link to the blueprints there, so you can look at how their essays or prose constructive responses, the little part pieces, how they will be assessed. So, with that, I wish to invite you to parent workshops. There's a list of the ones moving forward, and then high school tomorrow evening prior to the eighth grade parent night, and the Royal Media Center, followed by one in PKM and one in Peter O'Vassell. Okay, we'd like to just take one more milestone to tell you to discuss the no opt-out policy that our state has accepted. And I think that this is very important for the board to understand, because I know that this is something that is coming up. I will also tell you that in preparation for conversations with parents, I have joined several blogs talking about the opt-out policy so that I could answer any questions or concerns that we have. So a lot of this is driven from that. In late October, Commissioner Hesby issued a letter basically outlining that the state has adopted a no opt-out policy. There is no way, so to speak, to opt out of PARC. And in doing so, he cites the New Jersey Administrative Code six A, which I have included on the website. In order for a student to not participate in PARC, they would need to be absent for a total of forty days. Okay, so twenty days for the PBA, twenty days for the EOI, because if a student is absent when I have scheduled the fourth grade assessment, which I just said, and then they return at any point during that twenty-day testing window, we have been directed to test them. Okay, so if they are in the building, they can be given a makeup assessment. I have also included on this website our district policies in regards to attendance. And I'm sure that I don't have to spell out for you that a student who is absent for forty days poses a very, very significant problem. There are issues with negligence, there are issues with truancy, and so, and so. Um, wonderfully common topics that have come up is the sit and stare policy. And what that really refers to is that a student will not engage with the assessment, but rather sit and stare at a wall, at their teacher, at their examiner, and so, and so on. There is honestly nothing that we can do to stop a student from choosing to do that with their time. If they ultimately decide not to take the assessment, we have to keep offering the assessment just as it is scheduled for the rest of the students in their grade level. And again, if the student is taking the makeup during the twenty-day window, we have to continue to offer that makeup assessment. So I once again offer the Administrative Code, as well as a link to Commissioner Hesby's letter of late October. And the reason that I've included that is because I found that in several of the blogs it's actually misquoted. Um, and then unfortunately, as a result, parents have been equipped with some incorrect information and making it up for students who cannot actually participate. I would ask you to be supportive of the fact that this district has been part of this assessment and will participate in this assessment. And one of the other things I would say is that if your child has to take the assessment, think about why it is worthwhile of their time. Every person that I've ever seen who has interacted with the samples has said, this is definitely an interesting test. So, PARC has a slogan, it's a text worth reading, it's a test worth taking because it's made up of text worth reading and problems worth solving. You will truly learn something from taking this assessment, and that is what I would like to note in our students and in our community that make this is something that really you will require experience with, you should. So again, I offer all of this to you as resources, and I ask you to help support us in our schools in participating in that assessment. And if you have any further questions, hand my contact information as well on the website, and I encourage you to attend one of the parent meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Thank you for being here. If you are a parent, I really urge you to go to one of these meetings, the on-computer practice session is well worth the time, because you get to ask some questions, and that helps out. Being somebody new in the district here since beginning of, well, I came actually end of November, I'm happy with what I see as far as the readiness for this exam and the support that we've received from the Board of Education, Miss Wexler's been very involved, Kate Brennan, obviously, Chris Del Taibao, B bars, known as T bar, B bars over there, our technology coordinator, and of course, Barbara Francisco for loosening up the purse string so we can buy the necessary computers. In fact, there's a brand-new lab going into this building as we speak. So, we are comfortable with what we have and what we're offering. And one last thing I want to do is the, the school boards, this is other new information. I'm not going to be discussing the calendar tonight, we're gonna hold off on that for next month. But school boards is, New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January two thousand fifteen to be the school board recognition month, the time that all residents might acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And one of the other areas I'd like to point out is that these folks are here multiple times during the month. It's not just the Tuesday night meeting that is open to everybody, but there's all kinds of meetings that go on daytime and in the evening. So we want to recognize our board members who do not get paid for doing this, so we want to give them a big hand and thank them. And I do have a little treat for each one of you, and it's not cookies in this box that's underneath the table. You know, oft- often the only time they get anything is when they leave the board, when they retire from the position or something like that. So, I thought it might be good to hang something in your, well, wherever you want to hang it. But, so you can see it and remind you, you know, when you don't feel like showing up, well, at least I got that plaque and we got that going, so. Here's a little, some misholts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point to what? I got asked, why don't we want to talk about the school year calendar?
We had some revisions we still wanted to look over.
Do you keep it in there superintendent's day?
Uh, well, it's contract. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Drew?
Thank you.
Mr. Booty? Mrs. O'Brien? Thank you. Okay, so, at this point, we can move the meeting on to thanks everyone on the board for your support for every, every mission, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rashika, that concludes the superintendent's report. Special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco?
Uh, good evening, we have the minutes from the December sixteenth meeting, both regular and executive session minutes for going with you.
Need a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the workshop, regular meetings of December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, and the executive session of December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Robbins? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, were there any discussion on the minutes of the executive session or the regular meeting of December sixteen?
I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, because I can't verify that, how the meetings are, because I wasn't there on both such, executive session and workshop regular.
Thank you, Mr. Booty.
I have to abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. So, can I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that would be one, two, three?
Four.
Four, yeses, okay. Yeses.
You're in the audience, she said.
So, I'm, I'm voting yes, right?
Yes.
Doesn't matter where I sit, does it, Ms. Val?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Okay, legal report.
Yes, five, correct. Since my legal report is confidential, I will discuss that in, during my executive session.
Thank you very much.
And as legal report, I'm, I'm taking that that it's in the agenda, a couple of things. One, that you agree that it's in our bylaws, our bylaw wasn't changed or altered, bylaw one sixty-four?
Actually, there was a resolution that was approved, but eliminated from the bylaws, but it needed a second reading, it was never done to a second reading. So, the bylaws are all going to be reviewed by the policy committee.
Yeah, because there's a bunch of the bylaws that are actually out of date.
That needs to be addressed.
I, I saw that. One other quick question. I, I saw on our, our bills.
Can we adopt the agenda as presented, and then if there's any questions at that time, then you can ask us?
I guess we can, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I need a motion- Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented or amended. I believe that, um, under budget and finance, there needs to be a change. Item number twelve, I believe, is listed twice.
Eleven.
Eleven. So we're just, yes, we have to change the numbers because it's listed twice. So that would be actually on page?
Transfer would be twelve, right?
Correct.
On sixteen, page sixteen.
Correct. And did you want to pull item number two under education, Mr. Rashika? Is that what you had said?
I'm sorry.
On page nine?
Page nine.
That would be the recommendation, um, for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen calendar?
Yes, that's it.
What about the calendar for twelve month employees?
Hold everything off for the next meeting.
We're gonna pull that one as well?
Yeah. Two and three are administrated.
Uh, could you re- could you repeat that, please?
Page nine?
Page nine, thank you.
Under education?
One and two.
Item number two and item number three?
Okay.
Are administratively withdrawn?
Okay.
From this agenda. And everybody has the change for, uh, budget and finance?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, numerical change? Okay, so with those changes, Mr. Booty?
Um, is there any reason why, Barbara, that we don't have a board secretary's report?
Yes, there is no reason why.
There is?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, will, we have it next month?
Mostly, yes.
Mostly, typically?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the financial reports are being reviewed at this time.
Okay.
It was discussed with the board last month, um, at the last meeting of executive session.
Okay. I don't particularly remember that, but okay. And we don't have, uh, recorded, so...
Well, what have been recorded is in executive session.
Okay, motion to adopt the agenda as amended? I move to adopt, adopt the agenda as amended. I need a second?
Second.
Pick one, Barbara. Okay, uh, any discussion? Mr. Booty?
I saw now that we have legal report back on the, um, back on the agenda and it will be reviewed in, in policy. Will we be getting any report from the other attorneys? Because I, I, we have Simon and Schwartz bills in the, uh, in the bill list and Porzio Bronberg. And they haven't been working for us for our, our legal counsel for, oh, God, I guess, uh, two thousand and eleven? Um, yet they're still handling, um, the bill press lease. And, and if we could, I'd like to discuss that in executive session because I think that that work really should be going with, um, Mr. Rozell's firm instead of, uh, Porzio Bronberg. It's, it's not a, a very complicated lease.
Okay, your question is, will we be getting legal reports from Porzio and Bron- Bronberg and Simon Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, let's stay on topic as that is on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, I believe we have received updates. Last week, uh, last board meeting, we got an update from Simon Schwartz in executive session?
We, we reviewed the negotiations, which Schwartz, Simon, and Nelson is our, uh, lead labor attorney.
Mm-hmm.
And, um...
Special ed, too.
Yes, Simon is actually who I was referring to.
Oh, well, she, she handles our special education. And, um, there'll be an update in executive session on special education. Uh, as far as the labor goes, um, usually the negotiations are ready with update board for close session as to what's going on with negotiations. As far as, um, Porzio Bronberg, um, I believe that their work has been concluded with the, um, approval of the amendment of help resources.
Okay, um, we have a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as presented. If there are no other questions, I'd like to have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes. And then time permitting, other petitions or requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Barbara, have we had anybody sign up ahead of time?
No, we have not.
Would anybody like to speak at this time?
Seeing none, clo- uh, moved to close petitions and requests.
I need a second?
Second.
Mr. Babitt? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board resolution. Who would like to read that?
I think.
Or who would like to, uh? We need somebody to move it, then.
We'll make the motion that we, um, move board resolution from our January sixth, two thousand and fifteen reorganization meeting.
I need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Booty?
I see that, uh, the things that I had discussed, um, that are reorganization meeting are, are still in here. Um, Robert, it says that general rules of parliament are used for every board meeting. Robert's rules of order may be used as a guide at the meeting. It's, and it's, you know, it's important that we have, uh, parliamentary authority that, that governs our meetings. I, I had a small conversation with you this, this morning, Marilyn, and I'll, and I'll tell the rest of the board, um, real quick what we discussed. They're there for a reason. They're there that we can run our, that they're structured to our meetings, that they're run in, in, in an orderly fashion. And not having any parliamentary authority to guide our meetings and, and general rules of parliamentary, you know, I mean, what general rules? What are they? I don't think that we as a board have the ability to figure out what they are, and that's why there's Robert's rules of order. Um, our, our bylaw says that Robert's rules of order is our parliamentary authority. And that should read, Robert's rules of order shall be used as a guide at the meeting, not may be used. If we're gonna change that bylaw and it's gonna come before the board, we'll do it at that point. But when Ms. Meehan was here from New Jersey School Boards, the first thing in the code of ethics is that we're gonna abide by state statute, state law, and our own policy. And that is our bylaws, is our policy, and we should abide by it.
Just to clarify, uh, Mr. Booty, the reason this motion is on the agenda like this is because at the January sixth meeting, you moved to postpone the, uh, the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be improper to put a changed resolution on from a postponed resolution. The exact agenda item has to be presented. If you want to change it, we can do so. I'm not saying that you're wrong about what the bylaw says, as we heard it was never had a second reading, so it never got the change that we thought it did. But the reason it's on the agenda just like this with the word may is because this resolution was postponed until this meeting.
Correct, correct. And that's why I said we should change that to shall be used. So now I will make the motion that we...
Okay, Mr. Booty, let me interrupt. Those are very good points. Uh, but right now, the motion that's on the table is the one that's, the resolution that's presented before us. So I actually have to ask if there's any other board members that, um, would like to add to the conversation at this time or have any comments to make.
I believe it's in order to move to change, amend this resolution, paragraph thirteen, the word may to shall. Put that, motion to amend is in order.
That's true. I think you were just asking for any other comments before we did that.
Correct.
I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Do you want to please reword that motion, Mr. Drew?
Well...
Uh, I believe in paragraph thirteen, the only thing that's required is to, uh, change the word may, Robert's rules of orders. May, change that to Robert's rules of orders. Shall be used, change the one word.
Right.
Second. Now you have discussion.
Yeah.
That's the only way to make it in compliance with our bylaws, to pass a, this resolution. That is not in compliance with our bylaws makes the resolution invalid, what we pass up.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Uh, can we please then have a roll call vote?
On the motion to amend the resolution?
This is just the change. There's a motion.
Motion to amend the resolution. On the amendment, then you go on the resolution.
The board would love to change the wording.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Um, all right, I just want to make sure what I'm voting on is the amendment from the may to shall.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz? Yes. All she cares. Okay?
Make the motion to, to move the resolution as amended?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz? Yes. Thank you. Mrs. O'Brien, Personnel, Student Affairs?
Yes, I'd like to present items one through twenty-five for board's consideration this evening.
I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Booty?
I, I see that from our reorg meeting that we're revoting on the hand carry from that meeting. It's hand carry one, it's the, uh, let's see, let me get the right number. It's the number... Number fourteen, we've reinserted into this. Number six from that meeting is in there as number five.
Correct.
But I, maybe I just...
Number seventeen.
Number seventeen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just wanted to make sure that, that that was included in there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Booty. Anybody else? Questions? All right. Roll call vote? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes.
Food's personnel criticism.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien, you're welcome. Mr. Drew, would you like to move items under education, please?
It looks like we want to move items one separately and then four...
We can start with one, if you want to do that separately. So I would need a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we're voting on number one? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes. Okay, Mr. Drew, you can continue.
Then we want to move...
Five, two, and three.
Three, ten.
Four through nine.
I need a second?
Second.
Debbie O'Brien. So we're moving items four through nine with a second from Debbie O- O'Brien and roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any discussion on items four through nine? Seeing none, roll call vote, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes. And Mr. Drew, we'll get back to number ten after executive session. Thank you very much for doing that. Okay, moving on to budget and finance. Mr. Bailey?
Like to move item number nine under budget and finance, please?
I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Babitt? Discussion? Roll call vote?
What is the highlight? What is that workshop? Not that I'm not gonna...
It's highlights of the two thousand and fourteen workshop?
So it's just an overview of what you went to in October?
Yes, we've gotten several interviews from New Jersey school, uh, emails from New Jersey school boards with regards to this. Uh, first time ever offering the highlights of the workshop in two thousand and fourteen. Yes. Mrs. O'Brien?
And just to clarify, the reason why I'm going to this one, I was unable to attend the, uh, convention in October because I have no, um, no time left in my work to take on. So that's why I'm doing it. This is, um, like, the, um, the Cliff Note version of the convention.
I hear it's very popular. Roll call vote, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
I want to make sure there's nothing that I'm, I don't think, yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I abstain.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes.
I'd like to move the final item, which I believe is the new number twelve under budget and finance, please?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes.
I'd like to move number eleven under budget and finance, please?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes.
I'd like to move item number ten under budget and finance, please?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
No.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes.
I'd like to move items one through eight under budget and finance, please?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please? Mr. Babitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Booty?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes. Mrs. O'Brien?
Um, we're getting close to nine o'clock and I'd like to make a motion to postpone executive session till about nine fifteen.
I need a second?
Second.
Mr. Babitt?
Mr. Babitt?
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Okay. Special committee liaison reports. Mr. Robbins, do you have anything to report?
I have to report.
Thank you. Mr. Booty, safety.
Yeah, it was a, um, interesting meeting last week. It was, um, the safety task force committee got together to discuss, um, with the police department, what we do in the case of a... what we do in the case of a situation that like occurred in Newtown, Connecticut. And you would think that it would be an easy thing to do, but it's really not, it was complicated. I got to take my hat off to our Transportation Supervisor, who made some really valid points that nobody thought of. And, and that was, what if we did have an incident like that? What would we do if there were children that were, I don't even want to say the word, but seriously injured? What would we do to pull them out of the line? And take them off to the side and console them, and because it would be horrific if you, you come and they can't get your kid, you're going to be, so I mean, it was, it was very complicated. But some of the things that they discussed that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, they talked about evacuating the main campus, being Westbrook, McAupin, and a high school if something happened on the main campus.
Right.
And our Transportation Supervisor said he can move about two thousand kids in one shop, which is pretty impressive thing to be able to do. But one of the things that we have to look at as backups is, God forbid something did happen, and we need to move children off campus into their designated, you know, safety area, and then to their reunion area. What do we do if something happens and, you know, it takes forty-five minutes to get a school bus driving back? So some of the things that they were talking about would possibly be to get maybe some staff to see if anybody's got the ability to drive a school bus. Maybe we should look at custodians and maintenance staff being, so because they're pretty much in this area, that we could utilize them to drive a school bus to take children to safety. And then that brings in another thought, is if we ever outsourced all our school bus drivers, we're up the creek without a paddle, if something like that happens. So we really need to, when we go through this plan as a district, take that into some real serious consideration, you know, we're never going to have, whether it's First Student or Jordan Transportation, those kids aren't going to be, those buses aren't going to be sitting on our property with drivers in there waiting for them to be used. But having our own Transportation Department in a district this size, although it's a monumental task to finance, you almost have to, when you look at the possibility of what would happen if there was a catastrophic event such as Sandy Hook of, you know, Newtown, Connecticut. So they really got their work cut out for them. There's a, there's a lot of things that they still have to work out, and I should have another report on this by the March meeting, they're hoping to have another report, if not March, then May, they said May, so.
If I could just add to that a little bit, I also attended the meeting, and you know, some of the, some of the big issues that Mr. Foodie pointed to, where you're going to do a complete evacuation, that's a major task, and it's being reviewed, and I think we came up, or they came up with some really good ideas for us to look at. On the smaller piece, my concern is, and one of the things we're going to look at, I have a meeting, and kudos to Mr. Citro and Mr. Kane, who ran the committee, just within the buildings themselves, is having staff members available to guide students and parents, because you, you look at each one of the doorways in all the buildings, somebody has to be there. Now, any given day, if you just have different schedules, it happens, you know, it's not going to happen all during the same time, it's not going to fit our needs, God forbid if anything should happen. So I really want to fine tune those topics so that we can add something into our handbook for teachers, guidance counselors, anybody in the building, that they know where they should go and what they should be doing, just in case this happens. So I did call for a separate meeting again with those two individuals I just mentioned, and perhaps with one or two officers from the Police Department, to look at those smaller pieces, because we, we look at this big global catastrophe, but sometimes it may be one building or two buildings, and either scenario, you really need to fine tune, so it has to work like a machine, so that's one of the things I really want to focus in on.
And, and they are going to attempt to do a dry run with McAupin School, if they can get a day where, and if we have a, we didn't use all our snow days, and there's some extra time near the end of the year that they can do this, they're going to try to do a dry run. So hopefully that works.
Sounds like they're covering all bases.
Trying to, yeah.
Thank you very much. The Superintendent's Roundtable is actually, well, the liaison is actually Mrs. Kepi, and she's sick, and I believe there was a meeting last week, so we'll just get a report from Mrs. Kepi next month. That would move us on to the State County School Boards Association, Mrs. O'Brien?
Well, my little report is, ties into our early presentation by Kathleen Brennan. Next Monday, there will be the annual joint meeting with the New Jersey Education Association at the Brownstone and Patterson, and that's the State County School Boards Association meeting. Representatives for both New Jersey School Board Association and New Jersey Education Associate, Education Association will participate in a panel discussion on bar, common core, and the teacher evaluation system. I will be going to that meeting, and could have a full report for you.
As will I.
Oh, very good, I'll see you there.
January twenty-sixth, it's Monday.
Brownstone, be there, be square.
Thank you very much.
That's why you're going to.
Is it a leash that?
You're invited, check your email. You got to go to find out, Mr. Rashika, if you want to know. Who doesn't hurt? Okay, Mr. Drew, Legislative Report?
I'm very new at this, and I think it'll be a long time before I can fill the shoes of Mr. Goddard, if he'll pass that around. However, I've made some effort with his advice, I'll give him the opportunity to do this. Assembly Bill three oh four has been passed by both houses of the legislature, so is almost assuredly going to pass unless the governor vetoes it, requires all schools to maintain a supply of epinephrine, and permits, not requires, administration of epinephrine by call by personnel to a student who might be in an anaphylactic crisis. Assembly Bill one seven nine six has been passed by both houses of the legislature. Schools cannot deny lunch to any student because their account is in arrears, so we have to do something to feed them. Assembly Bill three two two four requires suicide prevention training as part of the teacher professional development. Estimate is that that will take approximately two hours, it's been passed by the Assembly, it looks like it's probably going to pass. The Senate one, it's taken up. Unfortunately, my family has personal experience, not in my own family, but in fact, this last weekend, my son came out to Philadelphia from his college in Elon, because one of his best friends had committed suicide last week. And this is just happening all too often. Sometimes it's just one person, you know, can touch the kid and let them know they're loved, that they're ways out, so personally, it's not a board statement at all, but I seriously support anything we can do to identify those kids and help them out. Assembly Bill three four four one was changed to the Senate Bill nineteen forty-six, it was passed by the Assembly, Senate is taking it up. It permits districts to inquire of the Motor Vehicles Department about the address of a parent or guardian to determine eligibility in the school district. Now, I probably need to speak to somebody with regard to what the intent of that was. I believe it has an impact on athletic programs, and it may also have an impact on transients, migrant workers, undocumented families, so on and so forth, but I'm not really certain. But at a minimum, coaches have to be aware of that. And of course, the problem is, it's not, our coach won't do that, but the other coach will do that, if you've got any eligibility on that. Assembly Bill twenty-five ninety-seven allows the AP course, Computer Science, to be counted as part of the state requirement for either math or science for students who are currently in the ninth grade, tenth grader, eleventh grader, twelfth grader, would not be able to get that course in math or science. It's passed the Assembly. Senate Bill twenty-four eighty-four authorizes a study for a later school start time for students in middle school and high school, so, and it looks like it's passed the Senate, it's going to go to the Assembly. Having seen some of these studies in other states, what happens is that the early start times wind up giving in particular high school students less sleep and poor learning. I know how this is going to come out when it's been done elsewhere, so a year or two down the road, we may well have a New Jersey state law that says we have to start high school and or middle school later. And that's why, you know, it's not happening right now, but that's how it's going to. New Jersey Spotlight, who is apparently the authority on what's going to go through the, pass the legislature and not, seems to feel very strongly we're not going to cut state aid to education, that it's politically impossible. However, there's severe pressure on the state budget, and so it's unlikely that we'll get any sort of significant increase in state aid. So, you know, the cut in state aid would be a disaster for us, and everybody else in New Jersey, which is why it probably won't happen, but there's probably not going to be anything substantial, I would agree. And the final item, you can just read.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drew.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drew.
Very thorough. Okay, technology oversight, Mr. Babbitt? Anything to report? Thank you very much. West Milford Education Foundation, Mrs. O'Brien?
Nothing to report at this time.
Township Board of Education Joint Committee, Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, there's nothing to report.
Thank you.
I don't have anything on New Jersey School Boards, I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Foodie. That was an oversight on my part.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, is there any old business? Mr. Foodie?
January sixth reord, Resolution six and seven were passed as is, and I would like to, if we can, at our next board meeting, have legal report inserted in that so that we can, unless there's a, I mean, can we just vote to do that, Joe, or do we have to redo the whole resolution?
You can just vote to add it.
We can just vote to add it, yeah.
Okay.
And I would make the motion right now for Resolution six and seven, that we add in the board's legal report after the board secretary's report.
And that's to keep in compliance with-
Keeping compliance with our bylaws, correct.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I guess we need to, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other old business?
Seeing none, move to close.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, do we have discussion, I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Brien?
No, if you're done, I just have to, I'd like to request, we're almost at quarter after, we can delay the start of the new second session for ten more minutes.
We have five minutes. So let's move on to, any more questions regarding old business? Okay, all in favor of closing old business?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new business? Mr. Foodie?
We get a-
Are you reading the new business, it's our agenda?
No, 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 no. If you want me to read that, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Just looking to have that moved, please, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the, I guess, the resolution about where's the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January two thousand fifteen to be School Board Recognition Month. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
You don't have to.
Okay. And again, I want to thank Mr. Rashika for, for a little plaque, but I make a motion that we move this, this resolution.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion move passes, and, yes.
We collect Barbara, parking fee for seniors? All right. And the intent of that was to use some of that money, that what, use that money for parking lot maintenance?
So it appears, I mean, it was before May.
Yes, yes. But that's, that was the, the general idea behind that. And that money currently goes into the general fund?
Right.
Okay? I, I would make the suggestion that, and I don't know, Barbara, when do you issue all the permits, if there's some done in the middle of the year, or they basically done all in the beginning?
They're all done by the high school.
Okay.
We don't have anything that there was-
Okay. But I would make the motion that we take that money and we, we move it into maintenance reserve, the monies that we collect, because that's basically what we said that that money would be used for.
We can use it in maintenance reserve, because it's not required maintenance. It would be a capital outlay, so we'd have to be, go in the capital reserve.
It would have to go in a capital reserve, okay, then I would make the motion that we, we take the receipts from the high school senior parking permits and move that money into capital reserves.
I believe that we need a second for that in order to discuss it, but-
That's part of the budget process, so I think that this discussion is a little premature.
All right, so we do that, discuss that in Budget and Finance then?
Right. And we normally put money away in capital reserve every year anyway, in anticipation of capital needs. I have to look to see the last time the parking lot was paved, because I think it was a few years ago that it was done. But, you know, we have a limit on the capital reserve fund, how much could be included in there.
Okay.
And we really can't designate it for that particular-
It's a percentage of the budget, Barbara.
No, it's a percentage of the, the capital, it's a percentage out of the buildings, what the work of the buildings is.
Okay.
So why don't we move that to refer to a committee, which would be Budget and Finance? Okay, then, you know, we have no way of isolating that amount of money in capital reserve, because capital reserve is one fund, so we would have to-
But at least put it where we, we intend to use it, and if it, you know, it's put somewhere else, then so be it, but as long as we have money in capital reserve to do those parking lots at a later date, I just think it would be a-
Then it comes out of the revenue source.
Can we move this discussion over to Budget and Finance?
Yeah, we'll move it over to the discussion of Budget and Finance.
Because I think that might be worth discussing in committee. Any other new business? Mr. Robbins?
Yes, I would, you know, I guess, put a motion to have attendance records. I'm concerned, you know, naturally, everyone's concerned about the higher education of our students, you know, by, by school. I would like to see attendance records by grade, by school, including teachers, for a particular month, how many, how many students are in- uh, for a particular month, how many, how many students are in attendance and the, the number of students that are absent.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Roselli? Mr. Bailey?
No, I want Rosel, I want Roselli to go first, I think he's gonna answer my question.
Thank you.
I'm just not, that's really some, I mean, where would you want the information, in, in the packet?
Uh, information's live to the board.
Right.
You know, just concerning the status of attendance, you know, each month.
And, and, I'm sorry.
Mr. Foodie?
I, I think what, if, if I got it right, you're not asking for student names and teacher names?
No.
You just wanna know what are, I mean, 'cause that's one of the things that, one of our goals is to increase learning through, through, you know, more student participation. So I think he just, if I, if I get it right, wanna see where, where we were, where we're going and what our trends are.
So, you just wanted attendance to report, basically, say there's four hundred kids in twelfth grade, six of them were absent on whatever day, like something like that?
Uh, we, uh, we have, let's say two hundred, let's say we have, uh, two hundred kids in, uh, element, one of the elementary schools and we have twenty absences.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we can compare that with other schools.
In my past district, what we did was, we ran reports, now it could be bi-monthly, every other month, uh, but it's based on percentages. That's what you're gonna look at.
He's getting to the so far.
I don't think we can break, yeah, we can, you break it down to where it's gonna be a number of students, but you break it down to percentages because the state actually looks at that too. So that's something we can, we can look into, uh, constructing and, and have that available for everybody.
Yeah, those numbers are, are available, you can say those in the...
The problem is, if the answer's only one, then you could identify an individual student, so I think it is better to have a, a, a percent.
Well, what, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but why don't we just see what kind of report you can produce first and see if that's accurate.
We can, we can run some, you know, we can have, in committee meetings, we can run some samples and, you know, kinda look at them and decide what's gonna work and go from there.
You know, it may, it may make a difference, uh, you know, trying to fix a problem before it creates a big one, uh, you know, we find a certain grade at a certain school doesn't, you know, or, or lacking, right, or their, their grade levels are down.
That's fine, I mean, attendance, uh, you know, is a sure indicator of student success, so certainly, we can look at the percentages and where we're falling short, that we might be a place to incorporate that.
Mr. Roselli?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yeah, I like the percentage better, I like to keep things as confidential as possible. I think we're, if we may be delving into a little too much information, even though we're looking at numbers, um, person who can dig far enough into, into a school or into a, uh, a, a grade can kinda figure things out. I don't like that, I don't, I'm not out to play gotcha with the classroom or with the student. Um, the other issue we need to take, uh, consideration of is that we have homeless shelter here in West Milford, so, uh, and those, most of the time are transients that are coming through. So it, um, and, and it's, we consider all children to be important, but since it is of a transient nature, um, the reflection of the numbers may not actually be conducive to what is actually going on with the long-term people living here in West Milford. And we need to take that to consideration and it's not the child's fault in any way, shape, or form that they're in a transient position.
Okay, just to, uh...
Sorry.
One more question.
Yes, Mr. Drew.
On that, that the state funding is affected by the trade.
Yeah.
It's tied to it.
Okay, just to clarify.
And every time you meet those numbers, they raise them.
That's what happens.
Just to clarify, there, there actually is a motion and a second, but I don't think you need your motion. I think Mr. Rashika is saying he's going to see what kind of report he can get and then, and then send it to the board is sufficient. Um, but there is a motion to direct him to do so, again, whether it's necessary, it's up to the board. You can withdraw it or you can keep it going.
I'll do it.
Would this also include special education? Uh, I know that we have, uh, two hundred students in special education that travel.
And that will be incorporated into, uh, okay, we can incorporate that.
Did you wanna withdraw your, um, motion, Mr. Robbins, since Mr. Rashika's going to be providing the board with the report anyway?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, I'll take a look at it. Sorry, everybody.
So you're gonna rescind the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else under new business?
Seeing none, move to close new business.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
New business? Close.
To close. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions and requests, petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until thirty, thirty minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of student during petitions and requests. If anybody'd like to speak?
Seeing none, move to close. New petitions and requests.
Need a second? Mr. Babbitt? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive session resolved at the board going to executive session at nine P M. for approximately sixty minutes for the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs, the superintendent search, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board reserves the right to take action.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
Need a second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We are going to start executive session here, so I ask that the public step out of the room for a short team, please, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to, it's affirming.
Yes, it's affirming the decisions.
So, so second?
Wait, oh, does he, does he have to read it?
I thought he moved.
Oh, he doesn't have to read it, all right, but then I...
Marilyn always did, but it's on the agenda, so...
Well, I'm, I'm second.
Okay, so Mr. Drew's moving, um, the agenda item number ten, affirming the HIBs, uh, the, the board determinations and, um, seconded by Debbie O'Brien. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Okay, thank you. Move to...
Wait, will the, will the minutes reflect the, Mr. Bailey, Dr. Todd's line?
Okay, um, I move to adjourn?
Second.
Eleven oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very, very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us.
Anytime.